All right, we will start the meeting with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome PAC B.
Perfect, yes.
Meeting, nice to see you, Mr. Edgett. Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from July 1st, 2021?
Move.
Second.
Any changes, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Citizens comments. We have the privilege tonight of Amanda Mizoney from the Central New York Regional Planning and Development Board to discuss some climate smart action that we could take that would maybe get us some grant money down the road and things that we could do to improve our village. We don't have a microphone set up for you, but you're close to the TV camera, so that'll help.
Talk loud.
Talk loud.
But I'm just going to start with a handout for the board members. I know it's small print, but I wanted to try to fit it all on one thing, so maybe you can pull out a magnifying glass later. Oh, great, I think there's probably more than you know what. So for those who don't know me, my name's Amanda Mizoney. I'm a principal planner at the Central New York Regional Planning and Development Board. I work in the energy management program there. I'm here tonight to talk about NYSERTA's Clean Energy Communities Program. The regional planning board is the central New York regional coordinator for that program. So we provide free service technical assistance to municipalities within our five county regions to work through this program, which involves a number of different grant opportunities, one of which the village has already received through work that you've done over the past couple of years. So I've been working primarily with Greg to work through this program. And we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago at this point, about the updates to the program that were made this past January. And I thought it would be a good idea to discuss some of those updates with you all and, you know, plot a course forward for the village in implementing some of these clean energy actions. A lot of them not only can help you through this program to get grant funds, but also can, you know, make your community more energy efficient and sustainable and reduce your energy use and therefore your costs. So there's a lot of benefits to, you know, pursuing any of these actions. So I just wanted to briefly update you all on the grant opportunities first and then talk about a couple of the specific actions that Greg and I spoke about at our meeting and which ones that he thought might make sense for the village to consider. So first, the grants. The first grant which the village has already received is a $5,000 grant for becoming designated or completing four of this list of grants. So you've received that one grant, but there are two other ways that you can receive grants. One is through what's called points-based grants. So if you look at the top right in the small orange box, it gives you a really quick snapshot of what that means. But there are points available for each of the high-impact actions when you complete them. And if you reach the points threshold noted 3,000, 4,000, or 5,000 points, there are grants available at those levels. $10,000 for 3,000 points, $20,000 for 4,000 points, and then $70,000 for 5,000 points. And you may also see in that box, there's a certain number of grants available per region at those different levels. And so here we are competing against other municipalities within the central New York region that are the same size as your community, so less than 40,000 people within the community. And so our central New York region is Cayuga, Cortland, Madison, Anadaga, and Oswego counties. So you can see there's 40 of those $10,000 grants available, 10 of the $20,000 grants, and then four of the $70,000 grants. And those grants are cumulative, so once you reach 3,000 points, you don't need another 4,000 to get to the 4,000 level, you just need another 1,000 points. And then that would gain an additional $20,000 in addition to that first 10,000, so 30,000 total. So if you did reach that 5,000-point threshold and were one of the first four in central New York, then that would mean $10,000 total across those three points-based grant opportunities. The other way that you could receive grants through this program are what NYSERTA calls "action grants." So there are a couple of actions on this list that are in red that I'll explain a little bit more about in a moment, but if you complete just that one action, you receive the points that are noted associated with that action in addition to a $5,000 action grant. There are a maximum of 100 of those action grants available for the state for each of the action grant types, for the stretch code and for community campaigns, which I'll, again, I'll talk more in detail in just a minute. But so there, again, it's kind of first come, first served in that sense, but there's, you know, a good number of grants currently available throughout the state. Some of those have been claimed, but there's plenty to go around still. So between the points-based grants and the action grants, you know, there's a lot of opportunity here, and it's kind of a pick and choose, you know, which actions, like I said, make sense for the village to consider, some of which, you know, I think you might already be discussing anyway or have been thinking about. And so those are the actions that I wanted to discuss with you all today, just to give you a better sense of what it means to complete the action and how it can benefit your community and then how it can also work towards some of those points-based and action grants. Before I get into the details with each of the actions, I just want to make a point that if you do receive grant funds, it's not just a check that you put into your municipal, you know, account, it's, they have to be used for clean energy-related projects. So, you know, that's something to keep in mind, of course, you want to kind of have an idea of maybe some things that you might want to use the grants for going into the program so that you don't, you know, qualify for a grant and then think, well, what the heck are we going to use this for related to clean energy? So just wanted to put that up there to start. So on this list, I know, again, it's really small, but I was trying to fit everything on one page for you. The blue, the actions highlighted in blue are already complete. They have already qualified the village for 1,200 points, that's where you're starting at right now, so, you know, 1,800 more to get to that 3,000 points-based grant. And then the actions in green are the ones that I want to briefly discuss with you tonight. And those are the ones that Greg and I spoke about as a possible pathway forward, actions for the village to maybe consider starting out. And if you notice the cumulative points noted at the top, if all of these ones highlighted in green were completed, it's 4,100 points, so that, you know, potentially could qualify you for the $10,000 and the $20,000 point-based grants, as well as a couple of the action grants that are noted at the bottom. So I think that's where I'm going to start, is the action grants, so kind of working bottom up, just so that we can, since I've been mentioning action grants, we should talk about that first, I think. So you may note there are four different actions that are called "community campaigns," and three of those four are highlighted as possibilities to consider. So what a community campaign would involve is some kind of local outreach and education campaign about the four technologies that are mentioned here. The four eligible technologies are community solar, electric vehicles, clean heating and cooling, and energy efficiency, which is really kind of more than one type of technology. It means heat pumps for heating and cooling, or hot water heating, or any sort of energy efficiency improvements like insulation and air sealing. Those are all kind of caught in that one category. And then the last type of campaign that is eligible is demand response. And so what that means is encouraging community members to sign up for the utility's existing demand response program, which is available to community members that have central air conditioning and a smart thermostat. What they do is the community member signs up with the utility to participate, and the utility can precoal your home in the summer during the busiest heating or cooling days. So basically, on the hottest days of the summer, they can precoal your home so that it's already cool, and during the peak of the heat in the middle of the day, when everybody else is cooling their home, there's less demand on the electric grid. And so what that does is it allows the, what's called peaker power plants, those power plants that only kick on during those extremely high demand periods, they can stay off if there's not as much demand on the grid. And so that's, you know, beneficial to the utilities, but also those tend to be the dirtier plants to kick on, so it's, you know, beneficial to the environment as well. So that type of program is free to sign up for. Typically, your utilities actually pay you a small award for participating in that every year, and you can always opt out, you know, if for some reason one day you don't want to precoal your house, you can just reset your thermostat and it works out okay. So the idea behind each of these campaigns is, again, a local education and outreach effort that encourages signing up for each of these technology types or programs. And if you reach, if you are successful in having at least 10 community members sign up for each of the campaigns, or one, or however many that you pursue, then you can receive, there's 200 points currently for each of those campaigns, so up to a total of 800 if you were to do all four. And then there's currently $5,000 grants associated with each of the four, so again, that could be up to $20,000 if you're successful with all four of them. And I just want to note for the, so I mentioned the demand response campaign, the clean heating and cooling and energy efficiency campaign would need partnering with our existing Heat Smart CNY campaign. So we already have a region-wide effort going on to encourage and educate community members on heat pumps and insulation and air sealing and making your home more efficient, and how to pay for these upgrades. There are a number of state programs, including Empower and Assisted Home Performance and the Comfort Home Program, that we would, you know, help educate the community about. Basically, it would be kind of a joint effort for that one type of technology campaign since we're already working on it. It would just mean, you know, your help with getting the word out to residents and, you know, maybe hosting a few local events to spread the word. And we could provide flyers and webinars and, you know, anything else that you might need on, for that one campaign. And then for community solar, again, that's a free thing that anybody can sign up for if you own your house, if you rent your house, it doesn't matter what that situation is. It's no cost for you to participate. It's a subscription-based model where you subscribe your electric account to a community solar farm with a community solar provider, and they provide you with typically a 10% discount on your electric bill. And so, you know, you are essentially getting, you're getting your energy from solar without having to install solar on your property and have zero cost to you to do so. So educating the community on that opportunity, you know, that one and the demand response campaigns are, again, both free to community members. So those are ones that we see as, at least from our perspective at the planning board, we see those as really great opportunities for education and benefiting everybody, really, because of that no upfront cost for either of those and the savings, actually, for community solar. So with, so the community campaigns are one of the types of the action grants. The other is for adopting the New York Stretch Energy Code. The stretch code is described as approximately one code cycle ahead of the current energy code. So the idea is that your community could adopt this stretch code, which would require any new builds or substantial rehabs to, you know, adhere to this stretch code as opposed to the base energy code, and that would make any of those projects more efficient. Based on NYSERTA's studies, the incremental cost of building to the stretch code is about 1% to 2% higher than building to the base code, but paybacks for those building owners are between five and 10 years, depending on your building type. It's on the quicker side for single-family residential home upgrades. So, you know, we're kind of going that way, either way. You know, the next code cycle will change in 2023. Typically, it's in the spring, but it sometimes varies. So, you know, if this stretch code is adopted by the end of this year, there is that $5,000 grant available. I will also mention that NYSERTA has New York Stretch Circuit Rider experts, that if you're interested, they could come to a village board meeting and present more detailed information. I'm not an expert on the energy code, but they are, and they are also builders themselves. So they have, you know, those kind of two perspectives that they could offer if that's something that you're interested in. I can make a connection and have them come to a board meeting. So those are all of the action grant opportunities. The other couple of actions I wanted to mention that Greg and I spoke about are a little bit more straightforward. The Clean Fleet's Charging Station Action, just continuing bottom up in the green, is just installing an electric vehicle charging station that the municipality provides. So it doesn't necessarily have to be on public property, although that is typically the easiest way to go about installing a charging station, just from a legal standpoint. Otherwise, you'd have to have some sort of agreement with a private landowner over who's going to maintain and pay for the energy use of this station, but it is possible either way. There are a number of programs right now to help pay for the upfront costs of installing a charging station. The utilities have what they call a make-ready program, which pays for 90% of your installation costs. So that's things like trenching and electrical upgrades that are needed. And then there are two different state programs. I don't know why they couldn't just set on one, but there's one through NYSERTA and one through the DEC, and they both pay for the cost of the charging station, the unit itself. So between those programs, you know, you're paying for almost the entire station and installation and electrical upgrades of the station. So those are, those have all been released within the last year, so it's, you know, really a great time to install a charging station if it's something that you're considering. And I'm happy to help you work through those programs and connect with installers that are eligible installers through that program.
How many cars get one charging station?
So typically, you may see the pedestal style that, you know, it's on a concrete pedestal and it's upright. That usually has two ports on it, but they do make single-port stations that are maybe more like in a parking garage that are, or against a wall that are hung, and those are typically for one. The requirement for this program is to have two ports, so that's either, you know, the one upright or two single-port stations.
How do those work? I mean, I don't have an electric car, so I have no idea, but people have asked me how you, how to connect and then get, how do you pay?
Yeah, so I do have an electric car, so I do this a lot. So you, it kind of depends on the station. Some of them are free to charge at, so you can just pull up and take the plug and plug it in your car. Some of them you do have to charge for, and that is up to whoever owns the station to determine that, as well as what the fee is to charge. And in that case, it depends on your, the system that you're using. So there are various apps on your phone typically that you, I have on my phone and have my credit card entered into there, so when I get to a charging station, I scan my phone and it registers my card information and lets me start charging. So it's typically done through some kind of either app on your phone, or there's another kind that sometimes comes with your vehicle when you purchase it, like I got a charge point tag that goes on my keys that I can scan that tag. And so there's, you know, it's usually electronic some way or another, although I have seen some communities that just put out a little basket or, you know, something that says like, please donate for charging, and people just kind of shove dollars in, but that's not as effective.
Yeah, wouldn't you guess? How long does it take if you're on E?
So Level 2 charging stations, which is what we're mostly talking about here, they typically, it typically takes about an hour for 20 to 25 miles of charge, but usually if you're coming to, you know, the Village Hall, for example, I'm not going to be on empty now, so it's more of like a top-off situation with using the Level 2 charging stations. So it's, you know, when people are coming to visit the village and, you know, they're going to be here for a couple of hours, you know, they might just hop themselves off. If you're going from empty to full, it depends what your electric range in your car is, you know, so it can be eight to 10 hours if you have, you know, that kind of range on your vehicle. But again, I have never gotten anywhere near close to being on E, and I don't know many electric vehicle owners that have. Typically, that's more if you're going on like a cross-country trip and you plan your stops at the Level 3 fast chargers, and that, those only take an hour or so to go from empty to full, so. But those are a lot more expensive, so that's not usually something that we're talking about when we're talking about this program. So, although it is something you could consider, I'd be happy to look into it with you, but there might be some sticker shock. So that's the charging station action. The other action on here, LED streetlights for decorative streetlights, works similarly to the LED streetlight for Cobra Head action that you've already completed. I have already looked into this a bit with National Grid with Greg. National Grid owns 64 of your decorative lights and the village owns 50. You have to convert at least 50% to qualify for this action, so we did reach out to National Grid for a quote for converting and what the efficiency incentives would be for that. And actually, it turns out that if the village converts those 64 lights that National Grid owns, they will pay you more in incentives than you would pay them to convert. So you'd actually be making money just converting, not even counting the electrical savings. So, you know, that's kind of a no-brainer, you know, if you convert those decorative lights to LEDs through National Grid, you'll make your 50% and you'll get the, there's 200 points for that action. So that's something I would definitely recommend. And of course, you can always convert the ones that you own as well, it's just, you know, is a little bit more of an, it's a little bit more of an involved process where you would have, you know, have to find a contractor to do that work. But again, something that I'm happy to help with if you're interested in that. Two other actions. The first one I'll mention really quickly, energy code enforcement training. Greg did participate in a training a couple of years ago. This would be an update to that training based on the current energy code because it was just updated in the spring of last year, so all code officers would have to participate in this new training to get the new 200 points. And then the last action that we spoke about was the Clean Energy Upgrades Action, and this would involve reducing your municipal buildings' emissions by 10% through actions taken since January 1st of 2020. And so this is just for municipal buildings, 1,000 square feet and larger. We already work, Greg and I already work on benchmarking the buildings, so we have that baseline for emissions data to start with. That's the first step, the requirement number one that we've already taken care of. But so the second part is, you know, achieving that 10% emissions reduction somehow. So that's either through energy efficiency upgrades at those facilities, or renewable energy projects, or subscribing to community solar for the municipal electric accounts. So that works the same as it does for, as I was describing before, for community members. Oh, sorry, it's my phone, it's my phone. So it works the same way as it does for community members where there's no upfront cost. You would sign up for a subscription to one of these community solar providers, and they could provide you with a discount on your electric bills for supporting their local, well, somewhat local, community solar farms.
Are all of those community solar opportunities the same?
Are they all the same?
It's kind of confusing, you get confused with all these offers.
Yeah, so they're not all the same. You mean as far as from different companies?
Yeah.
They're not all the same. A lot of them are similar, a lot of, a lot of the good ones are similar. So there are certain companies that, like I mentioned before, provide you a guaranteed, usually 10% savings on the credit on your energy bill. And some companies have a different discount, some companies have, you know, if you're looking to sign up, you want to be careful not to sign up for one that has any kind of penalty for, you know, getting out of, backing out of that subscription. Like I said, the good ones, they don't usually have that kind of penalty and you can, you know, exit your contract. Usually it's within a 90, you have to give them 90 days' notice because they have to try to refill your spot. So, you know, it's something that you want to be careful about because there are some better offers than others, but a lot of them are very similar. And typically, if they are community solar providers in New York State, they have to be vetted somewhat by NYSERTA, so there's, you know, they're usually good opportunities regardless, but some are better than others.
Just to, just to make this point, is you're not changing your supplier, you're still National Grid is your supplier, this is a subscription.
Yes, that's correct. Yep, it doesn't change where your supply comes from, it just allows you to essentially invest in a community solar farm and get those credits on your electric bill for doing so. And you're not, you know, it's kind of complicated to explain exactly how it works, but they give you, they give you a credit on, the solar company gives you a credit on your electric bill, but it's on your National Grid bill, and you're still getting your energy from National Grid. It's just a way to invest in local solar and, you know, you could, yeah, I'll leave it at that. So that Clean Energy Upgrades Action, there's different ways you can go about doing it. You can combine multiple of those, you know, community solar subscription and energy efficiency upgrades and things like that. And, you know, if community solar were something that the village specifically was interested in for your accounts, I'd be happy to take a look at any contracts if you're concerned about, you know.
We worked with somebody, we collected all of our utility bills, we provided them our attorney Our attorney reviewed their contract, and then he disappeared.
Oh, that's too bad.
I haven't heard from the guy since then. So I don't know if he's one of those bad companies.
I don't know. I'm curious who it is now.
Well, the solar farms were in the northern part of the state.
Yeah, that could be a couple different groups. But anyway, if you, I mean, if you're interested in looking into it again, you know, maybe I could suggest a couple of other companies. I don't know who you have already spoken with. Yeah. Yeah, we have some good relationships with a couple of companies, which technically, you know, I'm not endorsing any of them, but there are some that we have worked with in relation to other communities, and other communities have signed on with them. So I could point you in their direction.
For the village use, for the points, it's only buildings that are 1,000 square feet or more, which we have those already. What about if the village is looking to save money on other accounts that we have? I mean, there's many different accounts that aren't buildings that are 1,000 square feet. Can those qualify for the community solar? I mean, can we do the community solar to save up to 10% on those accounts as well?
Yes, yes.
It just wouldn't count for the 200.
Exactly. You can sign all of your electric accounts up if you would like, just for this action. It just has to be the ones that... For the buildings that are 1,000 square feet and larger. Okay, so I think I...
Excuse me. Do you work as an intermediary at all with any of the hydroelectric facilities?
Not exactly, although, you know, Greg mentioned that there is a hydroelectric company in the village, and, you know, maybe there's a... Two, okay. Maybe there's an opportunity with them, which that could be. And I should not have just said community solar. It could work with electric or hydroelectric as well. If you were, you know, offsetting your electric usage with the hydro, that could work as well. I don't have as much experience with that, but I'm sure we could figure it out. And we could, you know, either way, you could get credit for that somehow in this program, probably through that Clean Energy Upgrades Action.
That's an area we've been interested in for quite a while, is the tier.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to... Like, I don't have any relationships with them, so if, you know, if you all do and we wanted to have a sit-down, you know, conversation and figure out how that kind of thing might work and how it could potentially fit into this program, I'd be happy to do that as well. Okay, well, so that's all the actions that I wanted to discuss with you all today. You'll see there's others on here. I'd be happy to talk more about those other actions if you have any specific questions now or at a later time. These are just the ones that we thought, you know, might make most sense in the village, like I said. So with that, if there are any other follow-up questions, you know, I'm sure you can reach out to me. And if you have any other questions now, I'm happy to take them as well. But otherwise, you know, I know we've been talking about some of these things for the last couple of years, so it'd be great to move forward with some of these, especially the decorative streetlights, because that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, that makes good sense.
Yeah.
Crazy, Porsha.
Right. And it's funny because you would never know that that's the case, that you could just make money on switching it out without asking them. You know, they're not going to tell you that until you ask.
I can see why.
So, all right, well, thank you all very much, and...
Thanks, Amanda. Hopefully, we can get something going.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. We'll move on to the next part of the agenda, which is trustees' comments. We'll start with Mr. Dryden.
Not too much. I just had a question for Greg, I think. Throughout the village, there's a couple of old Time Warner Cable box amplifiers that are powered up. They're green boxes. They seem to be dead. The meters are pulled, they're capped off. The power is still supplied to them, but they're not being used. Dead infrastructure. Any way to get rid of them?
I wasn't aware of that, so I'd have to look into see what's going on with those.
I'm assuming it's Time Warner, Charter, whoever bought them.
The other one?
Yeah. They come underground, but they're right next to a power pole. There's one on Smokey, there's one on 370, I've seen. There's probably half a dozen of them around, but they all seem to be disconnected and just sitting there.
I can check it.
All right. That's the only comment I had, thanks.
All set? Move on, Michael Shepherd.
Jen, it's fine, thank you.
Okay. Megan?
Just a second, Jen, thank you.
Okay. Ruth Seiko?
Just a second, Jen, thanks.
Mark?
I'll stick with you, Jen.
All right. Bruce?
May I request a really brief executive session for personnel matter?
Okay. That'd be item A under new business. Okay, and that's it?
Yes, thank you.
And I will also request a brief executive session for somewhere.
Maybe it's from the same one?
That's right. We'll have two executive sessions. Mine will be very short also. Let's see here, I got a couple things. Got a nice note Jody forwarded to me from one of our boaters. Loved your village so much, we decided to stay another day. Love from North Carolina. Which is always nice to hear that. The library is back to having book sales, August 6th, 7th, and 8th. Check with the library for... There's three sessions, 9 to 5 on the 6th, 10 to 4 on the 7th, and 12 to 4 on the 8th. And on the 8th, there's a half-price sale for everything. They're trying to get rid of all of them at the end, so you can buy books for half-price. The Empire State Ride, it's a fundraiser for cancer at Roswell. It'll be August 29th that they'll be here. I know the chief has been down before. I think Bruce may have stopped down. They go from one end of the state to the other, and they love stopping at Mercer Park. They set up a station for lunch, and it's kind of fun to talk to the people. They're all excited. They love being right by the river. So it's an open invitation, anybody in the village who is into cycling that would like to stop down, and they're very happy to talk to people. They might even ask you to make them a sandwich. Who knows?
What does that mean?
August 29th. I think that's it. Don't have anything else to bring up. We'll move on to department heads. Let me turn this around. I don't know why all this stuff is up on here. There we go. We'll turn around and have... We'll start with our attorney. Bob?
Attorney.
All right. We'll go village, our clerk, Jody?
I'll stick with you, Jen.
Okay. So we've got attorney and clerk. We'll go with the police chief next.
Nothing there unless there's questions.
Okay, we'll work our way back around. Chuck?
I don't want to blow everybody up now.
Make sure you speak up.
The biggest, the big thing with us, that was a storm the other night. We had, I think we had total of four trees down. Highway was out until just about 1:30 in the morning. We pretty much got everybody that the trees were affected, they were our trees, and that come down the street, we got those taken care of. The other big issue we're having is the ash trees. Everybody knows the ash tree problem we're having. Our crews today have taken almost 50 trees down. We have a bunch more, and we're just trying to figure out how we're going to get those down. Up on Chaucer, Chaucer circled, I think there was like 25 of them up there we took, and they did a great job up there. They went up there with three guys or four guys, and they got the trees down. Polly followed them right up with the stump grinder. They got them grounded, and they followed right up with that with topsoil. So within a couple days, the trees were gone, the stumps were ground, and everybody was really, really happy to see them come down. And of course, the next question was, are we going to get trees back up again? And I told them, the intent is to, but we've got to figure out how we're going to get all these down yet. So, and then we're still, we're still working on that. The parking lot here is going to be done hopefully Saturday. Now they're talking about raining. If this gets done Saturday, and we're going to build a path at Mercer Park, the driveway, then our hot patching will be done, and that'll be good. Other than that, unless there's questions?
You're going to seal some of the roads?
We are.
Later this month, if my mind is...
Yep, yep. I don't have a list of the streets right here, but I believe it's 27th. Some of the, what we referred to as the cold roads that we had put in a few years back. There's a treatment that goes over the top of that, and we were able to get the funds to retreat those roads. They held up really well. We were surprised. We went through and swept them, and I was surprised on how well they... Because we weren't sure how they were going to work. I think it was seven years ago, we started putting some of those in, and we're going to get those treated this year, and that'll be nice. And once that's done, all our roads will be done. But it's been kind of crazy because we got over there in Downer, and Downer's happened. Those were the two original streets, but because more funding came through than we did the side streets over there, and cleaned that area up really nice. It was pretty crazy for a couple days, but other than that, we're real happy with the contractor and all of them. The water department, the biggest thing in the water now is, it's busy time in the water. There's a lot of UFO markings, markings of water lines. I think they had 18 today, but there's contractors all over digging. We have to get people out to mark the water and sewer lines. Still pushing to get the meter program going again. There's still a little reluctance to get in some of the houses. We're just going to get people used to us coming back. It's not like a cable company. When somebody wants a cable company to come, they can't wait to get them inside their house and fix their cable. You know, the meters are working, we're just trying to replace them, so there's not quite such an urgency to let you in. But we are working on that and trying to get that moving forward.
And you should just say, "Where are the cable companies?"
There you go. Change your meter out while you're there.
And you'll be there sometime between 9 and 3.
Yeah, I know. So, other than that, unless there's questions, or?
Any questions for Chuck? Okay, thanks, Chuck. Next, we'll go to our treasurer, Anna.
The trustees should have all received a copy finally of the year-end financials. I ask that you look them over as soon as you can. If you see anything, please let me know right away. I'm continuing to work on getting everything closed out. All department heads will have a copy of the regular financial in their boxes by Monday. And like I said, please look them over. It's been a rough year for all of us, but it's been a rough year for me trying to get everything together, so please look them over if you see any mistakes. I've already found one, so that I will correct. But please check them over and make sure everything looks like it's... Looks like we're going to close out pretty good. I just want to make sure one more time that I've got everything the way it should be. And next meeting, I'll ask for budget adjustments, and we'll be back.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your endurance.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on. Next, to our code officer. Greg?
Just wanted to mention with the new round of grants that the county has come forward with, that all of our local businesses have been sent the information on those grants. I went to every business property owner in the village, so we wouldn't miss anyone that could take advantage of this opportunity. We've gotten several responses from people that are interested. We've got several responses from people that really don't feel they need to do much to their property, but, you know, that process is moving forward, and hopefully, we can get that, you know, August 2nd, we'll have those applications in, and we can get that to the county, so looking forward to that.
Very good. Anything... Any questions for Greg? Okay, we'll move on to... Our agenda is very light, so we don't have anything else to deal with. Anybody have anything before we go into executive session that we need to discuss? I kind of wish it would not rain so much, but I saw a picture, somebody on Cross Lake had that their water was down to where you... It almost wasn't covering the shore, you know, by their dock, and now it's up over on the grass, the rain we've had lately. So can't complain about brush fires. Since we have nothing else to discuss, our next meeting will be in August, so we don't have any for a couple weeks. And I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session. Two items, both personnel issues.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? No action anticipated.